Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting, April 12th, 2021. Please join Vice Mayor Stip in the pledge allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, pour out Your Holy Spirit on your faithful people. Keep us steadfast in Your grace and truth. Protect and deliver us in times of uncertainty and temptation. Defend us against all enemies and grant to our city Your saving peace. We ask that you keep watch over the men and women serving our community, our state, and our nation. Be with them and their families in all that they do. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Jeff for that wonderful pledge and invocation. Everyone's present this evening. Our city clerk will now give information how to participate in tonight's meeting.
While the Goodyear City Council meetings are open to the public, the occupancy has been reduced to implement social... Seating is generally available on a first-come basis, but meeting attendees will be cycled in and out if necessary to allow for speakers to speak on certain agenda items. If you wish to speak during a regular meeting, please complete a speaker's card so that we may ensure you are in the room for that item. Face masks are required and must be worn when moving throughout the building. Our residents still have several ways to address the council. They may submit their questions and comments to publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. And during meetings, residents can view the meetings using Facebook, YouTube, or the live session link on the meeting video page on the city clerk's office website. After the meetings are completed, they can also be viewed on YouTube. The public may always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
Do you have the cards with you?
I do.
Okay. Jeffrey Uber? Welcome to the stand. Yes, just very quickly, yes.
Yes, I met you last year, Mayor Lord. How do you do? Yeah, my name is Jeffrey Uber. I live in Goodyear. I'm here, um, I know this homeless issue, there's a lot involved with everything. I deal with, I deal with these people every day. I'm just here to find out, what do I have to do? Apparently, you guys care about a lot of things. What do I have to do to get my friends to come up here and see what? We have supplies, we have services. How can we get together to work together? Because summer's coming. I lost two good friends last year from the heat. And I need, I've been dealing with the city of Avondale for quite a while. They're not going to open up their city council until August. Okay, I understand what's going on. I'm just here trying to help is all I'm doing. I'm a single American here, trying to do the right thing. And I did not realize that doing the right thing, there were so many, so many policies, so many rules. I mean, just trying to help people, there's just so much involved with the politics. I don't understand. I'm trying to understand. That's why I'm here. By the way, I did have, I met your friend Sandy Reagan the other day. Thank you, ma'am. She inspired me. She's a good inspiration. So are you. So I just want to, what's the process? How long does it take? To me, I've already tried to get an emergency session with Avondale. Apparently, it's not. But I can never get in there to see what's going on. And I just, I mean, it's public forum. I just want people to come to talk to you what's going on. They want to find out what's going on. We want, how can we help each other is all I'm trying to do. Five of ones, we got the resources. I'm just trying to, you know.
Thank you very much.
It's very frustrating, Mayor. Very frustrating.
Thank you. Did he give a card with the statement?
Um, I've got his contact information here.
Yeah, I talked to the police chief last week.
Okay.
Okay, he knows, he knows where I'm at.
Sure.
And because I deal with the police chief in Avondale, so, I mean, I got...
So, excuse me, sir. Uh, so you, we can get something done. Uh, I think you need to make a statement. We, uh, leave something for the city to check on to get back. You got, we have his name.
Thank you, Mayor. We certainly can, uh, we have all of contact information and we can reach out.
Yes. Would you do that, please? And then somebody from our city will go to contact.
Yeah, I'm just, I know you guys are building a big city. God bless everybody here for doing that, but with a big city comes big problems. And my issue, look, what do you do when you have 20, 30 people pitch a tent city? They have rights too. They may be homeless, but at the same time, you're offering, are they vagrants now because they don't want, they don't want your services? See, there's different laws involved.
Well, I can understand that. And we've given you the opportunity to talk tonight. And thank you for taking your right to come before us tonight.
Thank you.
Be sure to give them the information, okay?
And just, um...
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I, uh, just...
Here, I'll step outside with you.
God bless America. We're gonna win.
Thank you.
Every day. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items one through 10 by title only, please?
Number one, approval of minutes. Number two, authorize the execution of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company required for development of Fire Station 181, located southwest of Celebrate Life Way and 143rd Avenue. Number three, authorize the execution of a power distribution facilities easement and irrigation easement and an ingress and egress easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District for the surface raw water pump station located northeast of Broadway and Avondale Roads. Number four, acceptance of a traffic control easement related to the Estrella Foothills High School Traffic Signal Project. Number five, approve and authorize the city manager to execute the consent agreement between the Arizona Corporation Commission and the city of Goodyear. Number six, amend the conditions of the April 13th, 2020 approval of the final plot of Sadea Parcel 2B to delete stipulation seven and add two stipulations. Number seven, amend the conditions of the April 13th, 2020 approval of the final plot of Sadea Parcel 2A to delete stipulation eight and add two stipulations. Number eight, approve a six-month extension to the intergovernmental agreement between the state of Arizona and city of Goodyear for wastewater pretreatment service. Number nine, approve an intergovernmental agreement to participate in the West Valley Mobile Field Force Team. Number 10, approve an intergovernmental agreement to participate in the West Valley Investigative Response Team.
Thank you. Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I have a question on one of the items.
Councilman Campbell has a question.
Number two. Is it normal to ask for the utility easement after the building is built?
The question's directed to whom?
I'm sorry, Mayor. We're looking to see who'd be able to respond to that.
I don't recall, I mean, we do utility easements all the time, but I don't recall us doing them after the building is built.
Yeah, I know. Good evening, Mayor, council. My understanding is that APS easement is for a transformer, which is normally a deferred submittal and not included with the original plans for the building. So this was discovered during a process after the original building plans were approved.
Okay, so, okay.
Makes no sense, but okay.
Thank you very much. All right. I'd like the, excuse me.
Therefore, Mayor, I'd like to move adoption of the entire consent agenda, please.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Open for council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kino?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Number 11 on business. Consider approving the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Proposition 207... Sorry, guys. 207 Grant Funding Resolution. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor and Councilmember, I'm Lieutenant James Schonens.
Welcome. Welcome.
So Chief Rodriguez asked me to talk to you about Proposition 207, so we'll work for the slideshow real quick.
Can you push that microphone closer to me, please? Thank you.
How's that?
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, like I said, Chief Rodriguez asked me to address council tonight regarding Prop 207 that was offered from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. So, uh, to give a little background, in November 2020, Arizona passed Proposition 207, which is a Safe and Smart Act, which essentially legalized and regulates the production and sale, possession, and consumption of recreational marijuana. The reason we're here today is because Goodyear PD would like to apply for the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Proposition 207 grant to request authorization to execute all documents if awarded funds and to request authorization to approve required budget transfers. And to be completely transparent, the Governor's Office of Highway Safety is giving us this money. It's no, it's no longer a question. It's just waiting for us to finalize the contract. If awarded, the grant funds will allow the Goodyear Police Department to provide education, enforcement, and prosecution of impaired drivers as a result of Proposition 207. So you can see from the chart, the requested grant funding is $129,450. Uh, it's split up into two categories. Um, equipment, $52,000 for an unmarked enforcement vehicle, and $9,450 to replace the portable breath testers, which are at end of service. Then there's additional $48,571 personnel, $19,429 for the ERE, which is basically to cover overtime for specific enforcement overtime details. With the $52,000 for the unmarked enforcement vehicle, that it is adding a vehicle to our fleet, and it would have an ongoing vehicle maintenance estimated by our fleet department at $8,500 a year. So to give you a timeline, uh, in February of 2021, the Governor's Office of Highway Safety contacted, um, myself and the traffic sergeant, Sergeant Baer, and said that there was Proposition 207 money available, uh, and if we would go ahead and give them a list of some of the items that we thought we might need. So we did that, um, and when we did so, they, within a week, they turned around and said, okay, you're gonna get it. So I know it was a little backwards in the way of process and how we usually get grants, but this was brand new. The funding was there. It's 100% funded. Um, so that's, that's where we're at now. We're just awaiting council consideration to finalize the proposal. So the requested actions, Goodyear Police requests City Council approve Resolution 2021-2144, Arizona GOHS Contract 2021-047, which is for the overtime and employee-related expenses, and Arizona GOHS Contract 2021-207061, which is the capital expenditures for the vehicle and the PBTs. I know that was quick. Is there any questions about the grant?
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2021-2144 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2021-2144 authorizing the submission of an application for fiscal year 2021-2022. Governor's Office of Highway Safety, GOHS, Proposition 207 Grant Funds to the Goodyear Police Department, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents relating to said application and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement if grant funds are awarded and authorizing the city manager to approve required budget transfers if grant funds are awarded.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2021-2144? Do I hear that motion?
Still moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second from Councilman Kino. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pazillo?
Is this grant for, uh, both under the influence of marijuana as well as alcohol, or just the one?
No, it is for general DUI enforcement.
So it could cover both?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The reason why I ask is I saw the breathalyzer up there, and I'm thinking, how's that gonna work if you've got somebody who's high on marijuana, but...
Doesn't work at all.
But anyway, have they set the, yeah. Are they gonna set the criteria of, of definition of under the influence now that the marijuana is legal?
They are, they're working on it. Um, it's, it's unlike marijuana, I'm sorry, unlike alcohol. Alcohol is in our bloodstream. Marijuana is stored in our fat cells. So it's hard for them to come up with a certain amount that would demonstrate, um, some sort of impairment.
Impairment? Okay. So they gotta figure out some way to set the criteria for that particular one, right?
Yes, and it's been, uh, it's a nationwide conversation. It's, they're having a lot of trouble with it. So we still go under DUI, driving under the influence.
Okay.
We look at them, we do our field sobriety test, are you under the influence? We start with alcohol. If we don't show any alcohol impairment, we have drug recognition experts in our traffic unit who will do an examination and give a determination on what they are under the influence of, and which is also followed by a blood test.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
Is it true that marijuana stays in your body 30 days?
At least, because it's stored in your fat cells.
Stored in your fat cells?
Yes, ma'am. Takes a lot longer to work its way out, unfortunately.
Oh, no, but someone told me that recently, and I thought, that's just, alcohol doesn't stay in your body 30 days. And I was surprised that marijuana stayed, but they didn't say it was in the fat cells. They just said...
And with chronic users, it stays longer.
Wow, thank you.
It's upsetting, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Councilman Stip?
Just because it's in your system doesn't mean that you're impaired by it, though. So there's a difference.
Correct, absolutely. That's why we, again, we go through the field sobriety test and we look for signs of impairment in their driving.
Yeah, there's a lot more to it. The comparison between alcohol and marijuana are not the same. They're two different classes, so we can't treat them the same, so don't freak out. But my question...
See, we come from a different generation.
No, I know. I'm not advocating, not that there's anything wrong with that, if you're a fan of Seinfeld. But, uh, my question about this particular program, because no money is ever free, how long is this contract with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety? Is this a one-year?
Right now, it's one year. Um, I don't know if it was, um, if this came from the proposition itself, so that, I can't answer. We have this one contract for this year.
So if you go back to slide four, which is the pie chart, which I, if you can just, can you click on it? Do you have, there we go. Someone's listening. Thanks, Mary. So we're getting a vehicle?
Yes.
And 48,000 personnel costs, which is not, is that all overtime?
That is all overtime.
Okay, and then the employee-related expenses are the benefits, et cetera, that come with that. So we are effectively, by accepting this, creating a new program within the police department. We're, um, not creating a program, we're just, what it allows us to do is do more details, specifically related to DUI. They're, they're paying for that for us. Um, we're not setting up a new squad or a new task force specifically for Prop 207. This is one year. Since it was just passed, they want to see what kind of results we have from increased enforcement. One-year heightened enforcement. That's what this is covering. I'm surprised that it requires an additional unmarked vehicle.
That was, um, one of the things that, that we asked for when they said, what can we provide to you that would help you enforce DUI? Not specifically Prop 207 or marijuana DUI, but what would it help us enforce DUI? Our DUI-specific enforcement officers have a, they're very, very successful.
Yeah.
And having the unmarked car where you can, um, you know, sit somewhere and watch people do whatever they're doing has been, it's very helpful.
Or just blend in, yeah.
Right, so, you know, people see the big, you know, car with the lights, they, uh, they go back inside or behave.
Yeah, the black and whites are dead giveaway.
Yes.
So, and I think that's another important distinction. Sometimes we talk about getting these grants, and we celebrate that, but then it becomes a long-term program where this is not that.
This is not a long-term program.
And that's what I, that's the other thing I wanted to point out.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the information on it all. Thanks.
Councilman Loretano?
Well, thank you very much. I know we've gotten money from the Governor's Office several other cycles, too, so it's a good program, and I like this. I think it's a little ironic that we're getting money from the marijuana grant to go get the impaired drivers. Um, so, and just for Bill's point, no, you can, just having the marijuana, not the metabolite in your system, you're done. You lose. So, um, it is, if you have this, you shouldn't be in a car right now. And I know what he's, the lieutenant's talking about, because I know they've tried this for Colorado for years. They've been trying to get a, an amount, like what's a, what's a gram? How much can be in your system, and they just don't have it, so. And I think what I learned was from a conference we went to, is a lot of it comes down to the federal funding, because marijuana is illegal at the federal level. They won't give the funding to test it, so the states are kind of out there on their own, so. But I appreciate that. I just think it's really kind of, it's, it's just really kind of interesting that that's where we're getting the money to go fight that and take care of it. So I appreciate it, so, yeah. Great job.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kino?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're on number 12, the last item in the business, to consider approving electronic signatures on candidate petitions. Oh, our city clerk's going to approve, speak. Darcy McCracken, city clerk.
Had to put the mask on to walk from there to here, so, okay. So, good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here tonight to request council consideration to enroll in a new electronic signature gathering application. And I'm going to provide some information on the process as well as upcoming dates for the next election. So our next candidate election is going to be on August 2nd, 2022. So that's a little bit over a year away still, and that's the primary election. The minimum number of signatures that candidates have to gather is 510.
510?
510.
510.
And that would be for both candidates for mayor and candidates for council member. So the Secretary of State's office created a new system. They're calling it EQAL, which is electronic qualification. So if the city is registered, it allows candidates to register and then collect signatures online. Voters must also register to use the system, and as they are registering to use the system, they're actually being vetted. And so their registrations being checked against voter rolls to ensure that they are actually qualified before signing any petitions. It's an optional program for cities, candidates, and voters, as the existing paper systems still remain in place and can be used to supplement or in place of the EQAL. So you can either do a combination, all of one, all of another. So as a voter registers for the system, this is the screen that they would actually see. This is a test screen, and this is actually for City of Phoenix. Um, in this, because Phoenix did help in the creation of the system. So as you can tell, the person actually then has access to the number of petitions that are out there, and it does tell them right at the bottom how many they can sign. So this particular voter could sign one petition for this particular office. And they have three options that are on the EQAL. So once the candidates can choose to share their link on the website or using social media, so the candidate would go in and they would actually create their account, and then they would then share on their own social media pages if they wanted people to sign their, their actual petitions. Once the minimum number of signatures had been collected using the EQAL system, then the petitions online would actually close down, because they see it as 510, they're all good signatures. But now the candidate could still choose to get more signatures using the paper forms, so it doesn't stop the candidate from still getting additional signatures. It's just not online. Candidates would still have the option, again, of getting all the signatures on paper or using the system for part, or all of the paper could be all signatures. The minimum number must be submitted to the city clerk's office to be placed on the ballot. If the candidate should choose to do a paper petition, then those signatures have the potential to be challenged if the person challenging finds invalid signatures. Another thing the system will do is allow the candidates to complete and file the statement of interest. The statement of interest is a new requirement from January of 2020 and is separate from the campaign finance requirements. So these are the dates that the signatures would be due to the clerk's office, and that would be the first day that they could be submitted would be March 7th of 2022, and the last day would be April 4th of 2022. And I've also distributed to each of you a hard copy calendar of this, and these are all tentative dates, because we still have the ending of this particular legislative cycle plus a whole nother legislative cycle coming up next year. So this is, it's tentative as it stands right now. So the use of the EQAL system is totally voluntary, and that's if council approves the use. It does not lock the candidates into using the system. The state has developed some guides for the administrators, which is the city clerk's office, as well as for candidates and for voters. And if the direction is to move forward, then the candidate and voter manuals will be placed on our election pages on our website so that the candidates and voters would have access to that information as well. So if approved, the clerk's office would start the process to allow candidates and voters to access the system for our election. And I would hope to have that done by Friday, maybe sooner. It doesn't take a lot of time. It's just a matter of carving out the time to do it. And then on our website, we'll actually post the links to the EQAL site and also the guides for the candidates. And we will also be putting the additional information on our website, such as the petitions and other forms that we have available to us at this point. So if somebody is interested, they can actually, um... So if somebody is interested, they can actually get that information together and start gathering after they submit their statement of interest, that is. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards, you know?
I didn't have any.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, can I have a motion a second to approve the use of the Secretary of State's EQAL system to electronically obtain voter signatures on candidate petitions beginning with the 2022 election? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stiff and a second from Councilwoman Pizzillo. Open for discussion, Councilor Lortano?
I think it's a great system, so much easier, and so much easier to verify to make sure everything's okay. My only question is, when they do the number of signatures, you said it was 500 and some for this election, because now we're gonna be lumped in with a larger election, will it go a lot higher for the next two-year cycle?
So it will still be based on the number of votes that we receive in our race. So while it might increase, because we'll have maybe more people actually voting for our race as well, but it will still be based on the number of votes cast for our race.
Okay, so just not the number of everything cast?
Yeah, it's not, it's not everybody in the county, it's just us.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Councilman Hampton?
No, I think this is great, too, I had a question, I don't know if I saw it on here, maybe you mentioned it. So, so I'm a person that wants to sign a petition, how do I... So do I gotta go onto that website and then register, or put my driver's license number in there? Or how do they know that I'm a registered voter, or, I guess, I'm just curious how that works?
You would have to provide some qualifying information, and when I glanced at it, it looked like you would need to provide, like, your driver's license information, and, I can't remember, there was like two qualifying pieces of information that you would have to, so that they could verify who you were against the voter rolls.
Is it something they have, like, if I'm getting, trying to get positions, and someone's like, oh, here's my, I have... Is there anything they have on them that they know, that they already know, or they gotta go get like a statement at their house? Is it more, I'm just curious how cumbersome it is for them to get on there?
It didn't appear, I know that at least two of the people in my office to test the system actually had signed up, and they didn't have any issues, so it's, I think it's information that you have generally available to you.
Okay, I was just curious, I want it to be as easy as possible for people, because it sounds like a great system, if it's easy, so... And then, you said the dates, people can start picking up packets, April 1st, but this, or August 1st?
Yeah.
But then, but the electronic version will start in next...
We're gonna, I'm gonna have the forms available, but the actual packet of information, because there's a lot more in the packet, typically it's the campaign finance information, it's the handbooks and the manuals and everything that the Secretary of State's puts out, and they are not anticipating having those for a little bit yet. I can put out the information, I can gather the information and get everything together, and give you the information as it stands now, but again, it would then require, as soon as anything would be updated, then I would have to make sure that I sent anybody that had gathered or received a packet, I would have to update that information.
Update, so you're saying someone could feasibly start getting signatures in August?
You can feasibly start getting signatures as soon as we have the EQAL set up.
And then, okay, and the EQAL is good to go, okay. You have to have it, but obviously it's DUI, April 4th of 2022.
The first one would be March 7th, and the last date would be April 4th, that they would, that the signatures would have to be submitted, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that way, okay.
And just kind of as a follow-up to the question about voters signing up, if a voter did try to sign up and they couldn't for some reason, they ran into some kind of issue, they would be either referred to Service Arizona or to the county elections to verify signature, or, I'm sorry, to get their voter registration set up.
Okay, and is this, right now it's only for local, I mean, do they plan on doing this for every, even the statewide elections as well in the future, too?
Yes.
In the county, county and everything?
Yes, it is set up to do statewide in county offices in addition to local.
Okay, no, I think it's great, so, thank you.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Well, you have the paper form as well that shows how to sign up, and as far as how to register and that type of stuff, I assume there's a website, you gotta register with it, and I assume each candidate has its own website that they have to go to to select as well. Will you have that in some type of a direction form by Friday, you were talking about, paper-wise?
I can actually send the, for anybody that would be interested, I can actually provide either the link or the actual guide that the Secretary of State's office has put together. I can actually provide those to whoever may be interested in that. We will have the actual guides or links to the guides on our website, so that if somebody is having issues trying to get to it or access it, then that information will be available at least on our website.
Okay, and the follow-up on Councilman Hampton's question is, my understanding, before you can even go on the EQAL, you have to fill out this, what is it, the statement of interest? That has to be done first before you can collect signatures, okay? But just make sure you fill that out first.
And that statement of interest is on the EQAL site, so it does have that ability for the candidate to complete it on there as well.
Councilman Campbell?
I have forgotten, do we go to the Secretary of State's site, or do we go to the county site to register for EQAL?
It would actually be the Secretary of State's site?
Yes, I did that for Joanne, and for Tim, and for Sina, and anyone else that I was supporting, and it was really very simple, you had to do your driver's license, and I think I had to give my birthday. And they could verify who I was and where I lived, that I was in the right district. So it was real simple to do, I was just hoping that once you signed up for one person, they saved your information, so you could just go in and click, 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 but I don't think they do that. I think you have to go in individually for each race to sign up.
I think that once you register, then it tells you what races you can actually...
I'm gonna find out.
Test it for me.
Yeah, but it was really simple to do, and I know a lot of people would prefer to do that, especially with COVID, if you don't wanna go door-to-door, it's real simple. They just have to be able to provide a driver's license to verify who, in fact, they are, and their birthday, so that they know exactly that they're in the right district, congressional or otherwise. I mean, they wouldn't let anyone out of the city of Goodyear vote for councilmembers. You have to have a Goodyear, you have to be a registered voter within the city of Goodyear.
Correct, yeah, and it only gives you the races that you're qualified for, so we're not going to have somebody that's a resident of Chandler be able to sign up for any of our petitions.
All my family can't vote. Thank you, I think this is very, very exciting.
Councilor Lortano?
Does this keep you from voting, like, only vote for like three council members? Because there's no justice, does this like stop that, so you can't vote for like four, sign four different people for mayor or something?
Well, we talked about this briefly, so if somebody signs a paper petition, they need to remember that they signed that paper petition. EQAL will take, or will track, if there are three candidates for, say, council member, because they can sign up to three for council member. So they, if they sign three on the EQAL system, then they're done, and they wouldn't be able to sign any more through EQAL. But if they signed a paper one already, that could put a wrench in the works. We certainly can. We can maybe put something in focus, maybe?
Since this is our first election to have it in August, for, I think, for all of us, because when I was elected, I ran in March, and then I had to run again, you had to run in...
This will be our first election in the fall of the even years.
In the fall, yeah, so I really think we need to educate all of our residents, and maybe in focus for a couple of issues, just because they don't, they really don't know how we've changed the voting. So, just a thought.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Would the statement of interest be filed with you, or would that be filed online?
If it gets filed online, I believe that there is some way that I get it. If you wanted to do the paper, though, you could actually just complete it and send it to me.
Okay.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, you may ask.
So if you hit the 510 online, do they let the candidate know you're done?
I believe that they do get some kind of notification, because they do shut down that petition, so you wouldn't be able to get any more online.
Okay, so if you're a candidate, you need to just check it, is there some way to check to find out how many have signed online if you're the candidate, so you know how many more you have left to get?
The candidate actually is signing up for like an account, and so they actually can go back and check on that periodically.
Okay, great, thank you.
Not only that, I would think, Wally, on your website, you would put a link to that for they know where to go to sign for you.
You're absolutely right, Joe, thank you.
Any more questions? Well, let's vote on it all, in the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, we're going just to your comments, and then we're going to go into another meeting tonight. So, does council have any comments, recommendations, current events, requests? Councilwoman Pizzillo?
First of all, when I was at that Phoenix Children's Course Gala this weekend, I got so many great comments about city staff, they were just bent over backwards telling me how helpful they were on getting this event to happen. And, I mean, they just couldn't been, I just couldn't see any more shower of praise for the city. And explained to them that I'm very proud of our employees that we have, and we've got good ones, and I'm glad that they were able to get it. They had a goal of 110,000 arrays for the Phoenix Children's Clubs for the gala, and they hit 160,000.
Oh, wonderful.
So it was a very positive, and then thanks to Lux Air, Lux Air allowed to use their, what do you call, their hangars? Where airplanes were, that was, they donated that, so Lux Air played a big part in this as well, so... Again, let the employees know they had anything to do with putting that together and authorizing that, they were very appreciative.
That's wonderful. Anything else? All right, I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager, do you have anything to report?
I do, thank you, mayor and council. So I'm excited to announce that beginning tomorrow, our residents can take our citizen satisfaction survey. They can go online to our website, www-goodyearaz.gov/communitysurvey, but we'll also be promoting the online survey through social media, we'll have our Tom van out, we'll use the Good Neighbor Alert press release, we'll be looking for any opportunity to invite our residents to participate in this survey, and it is, of course, important to us to hear from them on how we're, on how we're doing. The survey is open for two weeks, and will close on Tuesday, April 27th. Results will be presented to council in June of 20, well, in June of this year, thank you.
Thank you very much, the next meeting will be a work session on April 19, 2021. We are going to go right into the special meeting, so no further business, to discuss this meeting is adjourned. I'd like to call a special meeting order on April 12, 2021.